We'll get started with this morning's board meeting. Welcome. Roll call, please, Mr. Harrington.
Mr. Bennington.
Here.
Mrs. Downs?
Here.
Mrs. Eubank?
Here.
Ms. Larmer? Mr. Pullman?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have a motion to adopt the proposed agenda. Second. Discussion. Roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington.
Ms. Larmer?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. Thank you. At this time, Mr. Hostler superintendent's report.
All right. Good morning. Today, we'd like to provide a COVID update for the district and also a further discussion, kind of picking up where we left off at the last board meeting in terms of the transition from the four days to five days. So we have Mr. Best, the HPI principal, Mr. Christie, Perry'sburg Junior High School principal, and Dr. Short, high school principal, and they'll be here to kind of walk us through some of the things that going from four to five days means for them and answer any questions that folks may have. So with that, I'll switch to a presentation that... Let's see here. So we want to begin the conversation with just a COVID update like we've done for most meetings that we've had. So we want to open with just some data. So I'll move quickly through this. From the county for the ZIP code, that is one of the data points that we'd like to track. Last week, February, the week ending February 25th, we did have 36 to 40 new cases for the ZIP code. And that is, again, you know, fairly low from where we were a month ago, two months ago, three months ago. It is up slightly from where it was the week before. We didn't have a meeting that week. And let me... Just having a little bit of an issue. So that was a little bit... So we were actually, the week of February 18th, we didn't have a meeting that week. But we had 20, it filed a 26 to 30 cases in, active in the ZIP code. So this is a document that we've put together that shows a little bit of that history. And you can see from, you know, January 6th, the beginning of this semester, we had 171 to 176 active cases in one week in our ZIP code. So that was one of the high watermarks of the second semester. And even with the numbers where they are today, 36 to 40 is significantly lower. So that's a good sign that we're continuing to trend downward. For the district, last board meeting, two weeks ago, was one of the lowest points that we've had since, really, going back to the fall. We've seen some upticks slightly with the number of students being quarantined. And then we went from, you know, students going from single digits, five, that were positive for the whole district. We're now at 10 this past week. So not anywhere near where we've been in the past. But for that almost record low, we're up a little bit slightly from that. By building, this is another way to break it down, and this is last week's data. But we do not have any students in the elementary buildings at this time who are COVID positive. We do have a total of six between the four elementaries that are quarantined. So those numbers have significantly, again, fallen, and those have remained low. And yesterday was the first day we returned to five days a week for elementary students. So it's great to see these numbers where they are because I think it validates what we're hearing about, you know, just the cases diminishing, especially at that level. At the secondary level, HPI has currently two, last week, two positives new and two students that were quarantined for their building. So we're almost 850 students in that neighborhood, and we're looking at that total. The junior high is the building where we saw a little more of an uptick. So we had six students positive at the junior high for a total, and then 34 students quarantined. Doing the contact tracing through the county, what we've been able to find is it's not, you know, there isn't any rhyme or reason. They're not necessarily related, these cases. So it's just something that we're going to continue to monitor, but students at home, around people, getting it from family members, or not sure where they're getting it. So again, that is a little bit of an uptick there. The high school with 10, I'm sorry, 2 and 24 quarantined. And so at the secondary level in HPI, we have a total of 10 students who have COVID out of 3,154. 60 students quarantined out of 3,154. So it gives you an idea of the scope. I'll move quickly through these. This is just from the beginning of the year. The red is the number of students quarantined. The smaller numbers, you know, in blue and gold are, you know, COVID positive, and obviously you can see where things have fallen off. The junior high, you can see that uptick. You'd have to go back to, you know, the first semester to see the number of students quarantined that we had. So that's something that we're going to watch. HPI, the numbers are, you know, where they were actually at the start of the year, the first few weeks of the year. So that's very good. The elementaries, as you can see, right now are holding up very well. Not many cases there. The preschool, they were on the other graph. I didn't mention them, but right now, we didn't, we don't have any cases of COVID or any students quarantined. And that's been for the last three weeks at the preschool. So the trend for cases, you can see we're trending downward. And, you know, going all the way back to October, we've been kind of trending upwards. And so since we've gotten into January, February, we've seen that decrease. And that holds true for the number of quarantines per week. So with the total number of quarantines per week for students, we're still below where we were in January. So even though there's a little bit of an uptick, it's very low compared to where we were just a couple of weeks ago, a month ago. So we're here today to kind of talk about that transition as it stands today. Today is the first day for HPI and the junior high to move into the four days per week. And so this is a big week for those two buildings. HPI has been transitioned, has been in four weeks almost the entire first semester. And then after break, we brought them back two days a week. So it's a little more familiar for their staff and families and students. The junior high, we had just a couple of weeks of four days before we had to step back in November when things were spiking across the community. And so that's a little bit of a different step for them. The high school is taking another step with their plans, and we'll talk about the timelines there. So we wanted just to remind, go back in time to August when we were beginning the school year. And the case for the remote days, we really laid that out in July and August. And this is our back-to-school guide for families. It was a large document that we shared with families of how to start the school year and what would change with, you know, dealing with COVID and all the different things that would happen. So as we began the year, we talked about the continued need for students needing to quarantine, closures. We didn't know what that would look like, but we know that having that day to plan, to do those things, was important. Improvement in remote learning, the disruptive nature of students that were having to quarantine and home instruction, this remote day was really set up to do those kinds of things. And that, it was successful in doing that, and it provided that kind of support. But also in our back-to-school guide, and we've said this at virtually every single meeting we've had, it is our hope that we can return to typical in-class, in-person classes as soon as possible. The hybrid plan is not desired destination for the school district. So throughout our messaging, we've always said that where we can find the ability to take that step forward, we want to do that and have students in more of a face-to-face environment. So the hybrid schedules modified the master schedule at HPI, the junior high and the high school. And I'm not sure, you know, at this point, the principals might want to, you know, be able to jump in. So I don't know if you want to grab a mic or share, and we can pull you into the conversations. So while they do that, one of the things that we want to recognize is that when we have the hybrid schedule, and if you recall, we began the school year with HPI being in session for four days, and the junior high, two days. Now, to do that, we had to make some decisions at the beginning of the year. And some of those are very difficult to undo because we hear from families, we'll just flip the switch and just go back. And for many of our operations in those buildings, it is easy to do. But there are some that it is not so easy to do because when we did the hybrid, we had to make decisions and really undo what we had set up. So for example, when we have shared staff, which we do for many of our encore classes and music, we have teachers that go between buildings. So at the beginning of the year, decisions were made about, well, if this person has to be at HPI four days a week, and then they're doing the A-B schedule at the junior high, how is that going to work? So they had to make adjustments with their schedule with many staff members. And so planning time is another area that is important. So we'll ask the principals to talk about that. By making some of the changes that we did with HPI, the junior high, high school, to a lesser extent, it did eliminate some of that planning time for staff that is required contractually. So teachers are required so much planning time either per day or accumulative by week. And so when we've talked about suspending exploratory classes at HPI, that eliminates that planning time. So when we're putting kind of Humpty Dumpty back together again at the secondary level and the elementary level, not all those pieces are going to automatically fit perfectly into place because we've had to make decisions because of staffing and programming and other needs. So now we're having to pull those things together and make adjustments. So it, and so with that, I don't know, Mr. Best, if there's anything at this point with the schedules.
Well, good morning, everyone.
Yeah, thanks for being here this morning.
So thank you. So back in July, Don, Mike and I, we met to talk about our schedules. And for us at Hall Prairie, we share six music staff members with those two buildings. And it became very clear early on that in order for the junior high and high school programs to continue during the pandemic, we were going to have to suspend our music program and other exploratory classes at Hall Prairie. That was actually a very devastating decision, very difficult decision for us because that's a large part of our DNA over at our building. Music classes, 75% of our kids participate in those three programs. We have great STEM and art programs, PE programs that take place during that time. From the kids' perspective, they lost those elective classes. From the teachers' perspective, we lost a critical, crucial planning time. That is the one time during the day where all our teachers at a grade level have the opportunity to plan for the week, plan instruction, look ahead. And one of the things that we have really done, I think, a great job at is our teachers had provided a common experience regardless of what academic team they are on. And it's because prior to the pandemic, they've had that time to plan. And during the pandemic, we've had Mondays for that. Another piece that we had to make adjustments was around our lunch and recess block. To make everything work around lunch, we actually eliminated recess this year. We created a smaller block of time so that we could get everybody through. But that also enabled us to repurpose the gym back in the fall. And as the weather changed, we repurposed our three music rooms. We don't have the staffing to cover, you know, five different locations, I'm sorry, four different locations like we do now and recess. You know, that's not going to happen until we move all the kids back to the commons. And right now, the social distancing guidelines don't allow us to put 200 kids, you know, unmasked for lunch. So, you know, our schedule isn't going to look like it did on Friday, March 13th, when we flipped the switch to five days. It won't happen unlike the other levels. So, you know, doing that, there are going to be things that are going to have to go by the wayside because we're going to have to prioritize things when we do that. So.
From the junior high perspective, you know, we, as we talked about, already tried the four-day week earlier this year and quickly saw that it had to be changed. The Mondays mainly for us helped our staff to prepare for those remote days. When I say the remote, so that would be the Tuesday, Thursday, or Wednesday, Friday. The majority of their day spent on those Mondays was two things, preparing lessons for students and content on those remote days. And then number two, reaching out to students who have been in quarantine. And those were the two main functions of that day. For example, yesterday, our staff for the day was engaged putting things together. We went from six students in quarantine. We were celebrating. We were at five, six, to 45 in one day. And that completely changes their schedule on that day. I think the understanding has to be that if we're going to go back to a five-day week, what is it going to look like for students and parents who are in quarantine? Really, what it should look like for them now is our teachers should be providing on those Mondays that extra lesson and that extra opportunity. Not having that Monday, what they will do, the students and parents, be responsible for getting on Schoology just like they would be absent for 10 days or out of school for those number of days. They're not going to have the accessibility to the lessons that they would have not having those Mondays. Now, I think our kids can do that, but I think there needs to be that understanding from the students that it's going to fall onto them more so than it had been not having those Mondays because those teachers are going to be teaching five days if we come back on that five-day schedule. And so that's important for our students and parents to have that clear understanding that that teacher's not going to be able to do a Zoom meeting or office hours on those Mondays for those kids. So, you know, we're excited either way, you know, to go. We're excited for this, get back today. I'm excited to get back to school and see that many kids back in our building. It impacts us. The main way on our schedule today is our lunch hours. And Mr. Best talked a little bit about that. We take, for our first two lunches, we take 100 students down and eat in the auxiliary gym. And so we were able to hire, the biggest part of that is setting up tables and chairs. We set up 50 tables and 100 chairs, just over 100 chairs, in the auditor, or in the auxiliary gym. And so having that extra support, we were able to get somebody temporarily right now because what it does, it takes away the auxiliary gym from our PE classes that we had to combine for one period. We were able to work out the rest of them. So we've made that happen. And the day goes really well with our staff and our students. But I can tell you, our hallways will look a lot different. Our classrooms will look a lot different today. I'm excited to see it. It's fun to hear those sounds and things as well. But we know, we'll see how it goes.
In terms of the master schedule, the high school has not really been impacted that much. We didn't have to eliminate recess. So we were okay in that regard. Obviously, having fewer students, that impacts how we flow, the curriculum, that sort of thing. But when we went to a hybrid, in terms of a master's schedule, we were not impacted tremendously. We continued with our schedule. It really became more of a content area for us when we were in a hybrid. So our master's schedule was fine. And I'll talk about the four and five days later in the presentation.
So for protocols and practices, you know, they, I think each of the principals talked, covered this material about some of the things that happen. I think it's also, Mr. Best did a really nice job. Don't go away, Mr. Best. Did a nice job of outlining, you know, what, we're going to talk a little bit about student expectations on those remote Mondays, and then we'll kind of delve into what happens for staff. So we have an example here of an HPI expectation for students. So every level has these expectations, but thanks for sharing this.
So one of the lessons that we learned last spring was we needed consistency for our age group. And that started with Schoology. So we standardized all our Schoology folders. So regardless of the subject or class, the Schoology folders all looked the same. So regardless if it was a student or a parent, they could just open up a folder and learn very quickly how things were set up. So our teachers also in their Schoology folders marked specific activities each day that if a student was quarantined, they could go to that activity, complete it, and get attendance credit. Each Friday, what we typically did was we asked the teachers to spend five to 10 minutes going over their Monday assignment. The teachers opened those folders up and gave kids access to those at 3:00 PM. And then the kids had all weekend and through Monday at midnight to complete those remote tasks for attendance credit. On the grading side, we had our second chance policy. So if a student did the activity and didn't do so well, our second chance policy kicked in, and they could go back and redo it. But I think one of the great things that our teachers did was that they worked together. They collaborated to make sure that the assignments were engaging, meaningful, and they did a lot of front-loading. So it wasn't just, hey, let's just complete a task. It was something that the kids needed to do in order to work on during the week. So we built in some safeguards for the students for attendance. We built in that instructional piece where it was relevant for the activities, you know, later on in the week. For the most part, it worked out very well for our students. And I think our teachers were happy with it, too.
Thank you. You know, and you've heard a little bit about the different kinds of things that occur on remote Mondays. And this is just a kind of capturing what the principals had talked about on those days. The team planning and instructional plans that took place, the Schoology folders, the prep work for lessons for those students that would be quarantined. Also, knowing that that's a day where there isn't that face-to-face instruction, a lot of the things that occurred all week long in a typical year that were disruptive in nature now were really pushed to Mondays. So professional development, that, those kinds of trainings and things that staff have to do that are required, those were able to shift in many respects to that. Related services, students were able to come in on Mondays who were receiving special types of supports, ranging from speech, OT, PT, and other types of supports. Check-in meetings with families, coordinate with the COVID team here in the district and find out who's out, who's coming back, and prep for that. And then the paperwork that teachers have to do that oftentimes during the week with IEPs, 504s, and those kind of compliance issues were moved to that Monday. So as we heard, moving to five days for the remainder of the school year, that is going to change, you know, that availability to do that. And that is not unexpected because in past years, those things were done throughout the week when students were present. So the transition from four days to five days per week is something that we jumped off the conversation at the last board meeting, and we wanted to pick back up today in terms of what we want to do for that next step. So the high school, I'm sorry, HPI and Perry'sburg Junior High School. So this is one thought that we're sharing with the board today. And that would be on Monday, March 29th, HPI and Perry'sburg Junior High would return to five days a week. So we know that today is their first day, four days a week. And if we picked that Monday, March 29th, it would actually give each of those buildings two weeks to operate in the four-day week. For HPI, it's not that foreign because they spent so much time in that mode. As Mr. Christie pointed out, there was a two-week window in November where they spent that time there. So it is a, it is a bigger step for the junior high to move from where they've been almost the entire year to four days, and it would give us a little more time. Break is, spring break is March 22nd to the 26th. So we would have two weeks of four days. And then that would also give us a week to kind of look at and review the logistics. Are there things that we need to do or change or modify in terms of moving lunches or other types of things? So it just gives us that ability. Most importantly, it allows us to look at the COVID rates and trends and see what's happening. Right now, we've seen this kind of decrease. But as we pointed out in that one building, we saw an increase where we went from single digits to where we are today. So this gives us two weeks to look at that because, again, as that number creeps up and there are more, then that responsibility for teachers is more significant in terms of, you know, caring for those students that are out. When we're down in the single digits, that's certainly something more manageable for staff. And the other factor, too, is by March, by April 2nd, that's two weeks after the last second vaccination period for our staff, our staff will be vaccinated, which is an important function for them. Certainly, the state made the decision that they want teachers, you know, able to teach and get folks plugged in. So it aligns with getting our teachers, you know, there. So with that, I don't know if there's any questions, Don or Scott, if there's anything you want to add to this or thoughts.
First, I just want to say how excited we are to be back four days. But with that said, you know, just like our families, our staff is exhausted. And knowing that, you know, going to five days, you know, things like, you know, Tom was mentioning, related services, there might be times where, you know, if a child was signed up or receiving those services on Monday, they're going to have to be pulled out of class, you know, unlike past years, and a few things like that. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Don.
As Scott said, we have quite a few of our IEP, ETR meetings. We adjusted those to be on Mondays to avoid pulling teachers out of instructional time within their classrooms. And our teachers, we met yesterday, they understand that we'll have to change some of those meetings if we were to go back on those Mondays. I mean, again, it's just one of those protocol things that we'll just have to adjust and change with that. This morning, right now, we're just dealing with a bat that's in the auditorium. As I was saying there, I got a text from Red Queen, and Scott's telling me it's protected and not to kill the bat. It's a federal violation. So, we're making sure to take care of the bat right now, too. So, but, no, but, you know, as we had our staff meeting yesterday and we talked to our teachers, you know, we've been having conversations about the four-day week, the five-day week, knowing what adjustments that would need to be made. We'll make those adjustments, whatever we need to do for what's, again, what goes back best for kids. And, you know, we'll continue to wear the mask and keep kids a distance as much as we possibly can, doing our one-way traffic in the hallways with our arrows. If you've been at the junior high, you see that with the stairwells and with our staggered bells, and continue all those practices that we already have in place. And, you know, keep our kids as safe as possible.
Thanks, and good luck with that bat. So, hopefully, they're taking all kinds of precautions. So, I think one thing to keep in mind is what we're describing is certainly disruptive to staff. And I think the exhaustive description, I think that fits teachers. I think it fits families and students, and everybody is with this situation. And this is temporary. This is that transition to five days for the last, you know, we're done with the school year by the end of May. So, as we begin to make these transitions, there, it is temporary in a sense that it is just for the remainder of this year. And we're really looking at what to learn from five days a week this year to help us plan for a better next year. Because students aren't going to be vaccinated at the start of next school year. And, you know, how long can we continue the path that we're on? So, this allows us as well to begin to plan for that next school year because we know we're not going to start next school year unless there's a significant change like we did this school year. We want to start it more like a typical school year. So, we have to kind of move into this space to see how it's working. And the things that they described, we will adjust for next school year when we build the master schedule. So, what we're talking about is temporary. The other thing, too, that we always have to balance, and I know the board is aware of this, is when we have the disruption and the changes that have to happen in the school day to go from four days to five days for staff is significant. But we also have to understand that parents have been dealing with a significant change in their lives, having their children home for a day a week. And what does that mean to them in terms of childcare, supervision, and other kinds of things? So, we have to keep that in mind as well as we look at the future and these changes. And kind of, we've always used that scale when we've talked about this COVID scheduling and transitions and trying to find that balance. And between the staff and their needs, between the families and their needs, and most importantly, the students and their needs, I think moving in this way to five days a week, like many of the surrounding districts are transitioning as well or have been there, I think it provides that balance so that we can have that smooth transition. I'll ask Dr. Short to step up and, of course, making it a little more complicated, but we'll jump in with state testing.
Sure, thank you. First, let me start by saying, last time I was here, I implied that Mr. Hostler yelled at me. He has never yelled at me. He's reminded me that a couple of times. I know I've given him great cause to yell at me over the years, but he has not ever done that. So, we have a couple of complicating factors. Don and I were just talking about state testing. And one of the things that helps junior high a little bit in state testing is it's one grade level, or both grade levels except for science, excuse me. So, the whole school is involved in state testing, and it's not the disruption that it is at the high school. So, typically, in years past, we have done two-hour delays in order to get the schedule, the state testing. And federal and state legislation requires we do state testing in the specific classes, Algebra I, Geometry, ELA II, Biology, Government, and American History. It also requires us to administer a college readiness exam. And several years ago, we chose the SAT to be that vehicle. Each end-of-course test, so those Algebra I, Geometry, et cetera, has a specific window in which the test can be given. The SAT has a particular day. That is an international day of testing for that, for the College Board, for SAT. We can't choose to do that any other time. Now, we've chosen April 27th as one of the many days that they've offered because the other ones are frankly too early or during our spring break. And we want to make sure we give our students the best chance to be successful. That's about the latest day we can fit that into our schedule. So, one of the things we have to do is look at how do we administer these tests and still have school function as close to normal as possible? So, one of the things we've done is, as I said, run the two-hour delay schedule. So, if we return five days a week after break on Monday, March 29th, we'll need six two-hour delays to accommodate the required state testing. There's no way around it. We have to go with those groups of kids that length of time. The government, American history, we plan to offer April 6th, biology, April 8th, and then you'll see the ELA II, Parts 1 and Part 2 over the course of the following week. And then, the math courses, math tests, the course of the following week, April 20th and 22nd. And then, the SAT is administered on Tuesday, April 27th, which complicates things a little bit. But in a four-day rotation, if we swapped Monday, it becomes relatively minor complication to the schedule. It affects about 420 juniors who take the SAT that day. That's the group that is required to take it. So, we put it out there for juniors on that particular day. That would be a day, and we've done this for years now since we've had to give that test, we've basically said no one else is coming to school that day. Before, we had a remote Monday. That was a day off for everybody else, but the juniors were taking the test. So, we need to look at that. And that's if we return shortly after spring break to five days, we'd have to go to those two-hour delay windows. However, one of the things that I've recommended, and I realize that my recommendations are not always being followed through, but that's okay. I appreciate that. We'll do what we got to do. If we use the remote Mondays for testing, then we would simply bring in the groups on those Mondays and continue with the remote day for everybody else. And we can do the testing over the course of three days that they're already used to that schedule instead of disrupting six days of education. So, we can give the test over to the April 5th, 12th, and 19th. The following week, we swap the Monday and Tuesday, and we give the SAT. And it becomes pretty neat and tidy in the format we're already used to. And we don't have to disrupt the schedule any further than that. So, it makes it a little bit easier. One of the other things we're looking at is in mitigating the spread and looking at how can we do something a little more effectively, come May, which the first day back would be May 3rd in this scenario, we can start probably opening windows and creating more air exchange in classrooms. And that's been shown to be a benefit to kids in a classroom setting. The other part of doing a two-hour delay for testing, and we've had to do it before, is it is a hectic schedule, and it's abbreviated schedule. And it's one more curveball thrown at kids six times during those three-week periods. And that becomes rather difficult to deal with. So, that's kind of where we are with things right now. We would look at trying to do the, continue the four-day-a-week schedule until we get through the testing windows, and then come back five days a week and celebrate everybody coming back at the end of the year. And hopefully, have it look what it might look like in the fall as a test run.
Yeah, and moving forward, you know, next year, following year, when we get into a more normal, you know, a post-COVID world, the, having a remote day for everybody on those testing days may be the desired schedule.
Absolutely.
Moving forward now that we've, we know that we can do this.
Absolutely.
And set up for it. So, but, so it leaves us with some options, you know, in terms of what we want to do. For the consideration, it would return students on that March 29th to five days a week, but the exchange would be then six two-hour delay days. And again, if you're a teacher, having those delay days, the day is...
So, there are 33-minute class periods, which is a little bit hectic. Lab classes, science, there's no labs that day. Art and music become problematic for setup times, getting materials out, getting them ready, rehearsing for 20 minutes and putting everything away. I mean, it becomes a little bit of a crazy schedule.
And high school students are more independent. So, we're not, in most cases, there aren't a need for babysitters for high school students and, you know, monitoring that. The other thing it does from the student's perspective is remembering which day they have to report on those two-hour delay days. You know, do I go here? Do I show up? And this would make it easier for those students to know, okay, this is the day I have to come in to do those tests.
Monday, April 5th, I think the schedule gives us all of, thank you, juniors and sophomores primarily. So, anybody who has an American History/Biology class, you show up that day. And it becomes pretty simple to determine that.
Question. So, this schedule where you have the two-hour delay, that's what's always happened in the past?
It has during a normal five-day week when we've.
Correct.
Experienced the regular days.
So, students are used to that schedule because if you've been in high school, that's exactly what you have in the past.
Well, it's been two years since we've run it because we didn't, we didn't have state testing last year. So, for freshmen and sophomores, this is a brand-new experience.
If I could emphasize too, Mr. Short and Dr. Short, it is hectic. Being somebody who's been in a classroom teaching with a two-hour delay schedule, we've got to remember lunches are, you have to have lunch scheduled. It's like running a 400-meter dash. It goes fast. It's confusing for the instructors, the teachers, the custodians, the cleanup, the cafeteria, the students running from point A to point B. It's almost like when you're done, you're exhausted.
Yeah.
I've been there, done that.
The energy is certainly ramped up on those days. Typically, we have about 18 to 20 minutes between lunch periods to clean up and get things ready. During our two-hour delays, we actually have an overlap in bells a little bit. So, we have kids coming down out of classes early, and, you know, we're just not used to running it that way. So, you're right, Mr. Pullman. It is pretty hectic.
In option A, in the past, I know that it's been a hassle with transportation. Without transportation this year. Sue, can you turn your mic up on, please?
Sorry. Oh, listen. Transportation's been a problem this year for the high school, obviously. And I seem to remember that when we've been on the two-hour delay in the past, which seems like the distant past now, that there were always complaints from parents and trying to get the kids to school, but we had busing to help with that. Now, we don't. I would think if going to option A this year particularly would be very nightmarish for parents trying to get kids to school. When I looked at option B last night, I honestly, I thought it was brilliant. And did I hear you say, Mr. Hostler, that option B could be something that would be a logical way to go in the future? I think it's, I think it's brilliant. I think it's a great way to handle all this. Because, and I agree with Ray, that as a teacher, when you've got that reduced schedule, you just kind of want to throw your hands up and say, oh, what the heck, throw in a movie. You know, I mean, it's just, it is so hard.
I will say, none of our teachers throw in a movie on those days. It is difficult to plan around them. Now, having advanced notice, we certainly can. But the amount of work that gets done is considerably lessened.
Yep.
I know in a good year, a normal year.
Correct.
When we think about spring for high school, fourth quarter is a nightmare with testing, not because so much the district, but it's the state mandates, what have you. So, throw that into, it's hectic in a normal year. Throw it into a COVID year to have delay and have testing. I think consistency would be very important for our students and our staff and our parents. I think it'd be.
I agree.
Yeah, I'll offer the, you know, the parent's perspective on that. In a normal year is, and you're right, you know, students are more independent at that level, but you have multiple children and they're coming kind of in and out. And I'm not going to presume that every child is, you know, is driving or, you know, that this isn't as, that this can be more disruptive for other parents outside of my family, too. So, that option B, looking at it as a parent, benefits, one of the few benefits of the pandemic is kind of like, why didn't we do that all along?
I was thinking the exact same thing. Why hasn't that been brought up before? Okay, so then, if we go to option B, it would really essentially, if I'm looking at my calendar, right, be about just four Mondays going back. They get out, they get out May 28th, but some, the seniors get out before.
Seniors are done earlier than that, yes.
Yeah. So, really, you're looking, I mean, then my question would be, to change that just for an additional four days, what's your opinion on that?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
The question would be.
Continue four days throughout the year? Is that what you're asking?
Correct, correct. Again, we're talking about changing, changing, changing.
Sure.
Is it worth it then?
In an ideal world, you know, we'd all want the kids to be back five days all the time. But in this environment, you're right. Is it worth four Mondays? No, it's not. It sounds as if you're actually taking my recommendation this time, so I appreciate that. I think option B is a better option. And I do believe that if we stayed virtually on those Mondays, that's the best option of all. If we had to go back five days a week, we would do it. We would make it work. But four days is definitely preferred, yes.
Thank you for that information.
Well, it is compelling for me, too, across all the, all the grade levels or at all the schools, this idea, Dr. Short, use your words, the test run. To me, is beneficial as we do look to what 2020, the 2022 school year.
True.
Is going to and needs to look like, too.
So, Mrs. Down, do you have anything to add to?
I think that option B, wait, I'm, this is option B, right?
Yes.
Where we continue the remote, yes. That would be my preference. There are districts across the country that I've read about that have Friday afternoons as professional days, normal years. And I look at what we do, and I think Friday afternoons as a professional time might be problematic for the elementaries because parents say, oh, my gosh, well, now what do I do on Fridays? But I think the more we can get away from pulling all of our teachers and having them come down here and getting 20 subs to carry those classrooms while those teachers are here, I think things like this are just such a better option for kids. And certainly, it's a better option for teachers. And I also want to, at this point, throw in the, we've heard a lot of condemnation about this school year, and we haven't done this, and we haven't done that, and the children are suffering, and all those things are true. But the thing I think we need to think about is, we have this amazing staff. I've not one, read one letter to the editor from staff saying, we don't want to go back. We're afraid. We don't want to get COVID. We won't go back until all the ventilation in all the buildings. This is what I see nationally, but that's not what I see in Perrysburg. And I just think our staff needs to be congratulated from the administrators down to the preschool. I think they've all done a spectacular job of caring for kids. And so, that's just a two cents thrown in that's not necessarily to this, but I think this is a great idea.
We appreciate that sentiment, Grush, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I know my colleagues do as well, that our staff has been working tirelessly. And as Scott said, we're exhausted. But we're doing the right things, in my opinion, for kids. And we'll complain internally to each other, but at the end of the day, we're going to do what's right for kids. So, when I said last time, we'll do whatever you say, and we'll do it well, and we'll continue that regardless of what we're charged with. To your point on Friday afternoons, recall, we did enrichment schedules at the high school where Wednesday mornings were delays, and we did some work with staff. We then changed it because of a wrestling tournament, actually, to Friday afternoons. And that was very popular amongst, among the students as well because they could get out, and it actually reduced the number of tardies we had on those Wednesdays. So, it helped us out quite a bit when we, when we made that change.
I'd like to reiterate what Mike said, Gretchen. Thank you for saying that. Um, I would tell you, uh, this past week, I've received four emails from parents saying that they were able to listen to our teachers doing their online lessons and they're doing their videos, and they couldn't say more about how positive it was. They were actually saying how much they were learning by listening to the video and, and what they were doing and continued to go above and beyond. So I can tell you from our staff and from me, that's very much appreciated.
So perhaps, um, Mr. Hustler, we could, uh, I don't like to wait if we have a date. I like to get dates on a calendar for parents and students and staff. I wonder if we could, uh, have a motion maybe to accept this and make a board vote on this today versus waiting till the March 15th meeting?
To accept option B?
To, well, to, to accept one or the other, to vote on one or the other.
Okay.
Well, I would like to move that we go with option B for the high school and the, the, as stated, for all the other buildings.
Is there a second?
I, I'd like a clarification, um, to do with a five day, you're including the five day return on April 26th then?
Yes.
Because Dr. Short was not recommending that.
It's a little bit of a calendar trick. So this is the confusing part. So what, what Dr. Short said, the May date, that would be the first full five day week. However, Monday, April 26th is the first Monday back. So it's, it's how do you describe it to, to families? Because no matter what happens, that Tuesday is going to be a day for school just for juniors, no matter what. So, so.
That's, that's SAT test.
That I'm describing it is the same really to what Dr. Short is recommending. So it's just.
Okay.
How do you describe the first Monday back is really Monday, April 26th, and then the 27th is a day just for juniors because of this, the national SAT testing date. Um, and then the first full week, five day week, is the, that first week in May. So it's, it is the same thing. It's just, how do you capture that in a way that people understand?
Well, I know, I think Sue, you're saying, do we wanna go back with the high school for those four additional Mondays in May? Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, Dr. Short, if I misunderstood you, I thought you were kind of hoping that we would do option B, but still maintain the remote Mondays throughout the rest of the year, correct?
That would be my recommendation, yes.
So Gretchen, your recommendation is kind of compromising in that we do this, but eventually go back to five days to the high school and not do the four days that he's recommending.
I, 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 I agree with Kelly in what's, what's three more days? I mean, out of a whole year, but it's the token of it. It's the, it's the hope for next year that I would recommend we go back on that Monday.
Okay.
Just, it, it is just a token thing we're doing.
Kind of a dry run, like, like Eric said.
But it gives the kids and the parents a sense of, there may be some normalcy in our life.
Gotcha.
That's what, I, I would only do it as a token, but I agree with you, Kelly.
Oh, actually, no, I was more agreeing with Dr. Short. Like, is it really justified to, for only four Mondays, to change the schedule? Cause I'm thinking consistency with what the parents already know and consistency with what the students know for just four Mondays, besides just to say, well, we did have the high school back five days a week.
So you don't.
I'm not for that. I'm for.
Four days?
Yeah, yeah, only because.
That's a shift, that's a shift in thought. I know, I thought you would be five days.
Well, no, because I do want people back five days a week, but then really just, you know, four Mondays when the schedule is already been consistent with them. You know, I wanted five days two weeks ago, yeah, because I wanted to get it going, but then I'm looking at the schedule. Now we're talking about May and four days a week, like to have the teachers switch, to have everybody switch, just to say, we went back five days a week. No, I'm not, no.
Um, so we have a motion and we have a clarification that the motion made is for option B, correct? That's, we, we only have a, we only have a first.
I, I don't know what the motion is, so I'm withdrawing my motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion. My, my motion would be that we accept option B as it's stated, where the first day, the first Monday is April 26th, knowing that April 27th, um, is the testing day for SAT. So as it's stated here online, returning back for, four, five days, starting the, uh, April the 5th, I believe, or May 5th, I believe is the date.
I second that motion.
All right.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, I'm, I am now joining the game here and getting my calendar out and looking at it. Um, so we do have four Mondays, but the seniors, um, Dr. Short, wouldn't they only be there the 3rd and the 10th, or are they?
They would be gone on the 17th. They would be their last three days.
The 17th would be their last Monday. Okay. Um, and something that, um, Mr. Christie said kinda concerned me. Those Mondays are, are definitely used for quarantine students and such, and, and like what you said, you know, last week we had six, now we've got 45. That puts a, a huge stressor, that, that rapid change in there. So what prompted a question in my head when you were speaking was, is there a quarantine breakpoint? Uh, we've got 45. I suppose you could look at it two ways. Was the rapid change a breaker, or was, is it the number of students on quarantine? Is, are, they could be totally separate ordeals, I could, as a teacher, I would think. Is there a breakpoint that would make you really remorse over not having your Monday?
I'm not sure if there's an exact number, uh, you know, for that. Um, you know, as you know, as, as a teacher, it just takes a couple of students out of your classroom and your workload just increased greatly.
Yes.
You know, and the most recent event happened, nothing to do with inside our building. It was all exposure outside, typically athletic type events where students now are, a lot of tournaments and events are going on and happening. That's where those are coming from. And I can tell you, the main concern, when I talk to our staff, and, and you kinda said it, Gretchen, it's never about them. Their main concern was, we, we wanna make sure we're supporting our students that are in quarantine. And if we don't have those Mondays, that was their main, main concern. It wasn't about themselves. It was really about, about the students, and they're saying, um, you know, I, I can't be doing Zoom sessions at nine o'clock at night for, you know, and we know we're still have teachers that will, will do those things.
Right.
You know, and, but that can't be the expectation, you know, for, for that as well. Uh, and all it takes is a couple of those kids to, that are in quarantine, and there goes a, a lot of extra time and work, you know. We're fortunate to have Schoology. Uh, if we didn't have Schoology be, for students to be able to access and do a lot of those things on their own. One of the things that we've also talked about is, you know, the dreaded day of March 13th is coming back up, and we, you know, we were on quarantine during this time last year. So our teachers have a lot of those things, uh, prepared, you know, when they went into full remote, you know, in late March, in middle of March last year, that they would be able to put out. They don't have to go back and try to recreate the wheel, so to speak, all, all the time, uh, as well.
I have a question. Do you know, or have you reached out to other schools that have been in for five days and, um, either from the beginning or most recently, and how they're doing and handling kids that are on quarantine?
Yeah, a lot of the schools.
To give suggestions to the teachers?
I talked to, uh, Washington local. They have not been back yet. I'm in meetings with them, with Anthony Wayne. They've all been very, the bigger schools have been very similar to us. Um, and when you look at the smaller schools, uh, like Eastwood, at Seago, Lake, uh, they don't, just don't deal with the number and quantity of numbers that, that we have.
Well, I know, but do you know how their teachers are handling and doing the, the, getting the work out to those students?
They're basically telling them they have to access it, you know, the, whether, if it's Google Classroom or whatever their, their learning management system would be.
Right.
That they're doing it that way.
Okay.
Very similar to, if a student was out, like I said, for, on a vacation or gone for 10 days due to an illness, they would then have those 10 days to make that work up, but they're not doing all those extra things that, that go above and beyond that.
Yeah. Well, no, I'm just thinking, so for a teacher, if you have one student out and you have to upload or download or put the information on Schoology, it's sort of the same work if you had five kids out, right?
Not necessarily, because you have, the, the needs of the students can be totally different. Uh, you can have a student who would need extra support, uh, and more so maybe somebody, a student who's very able to pick that up quick on their own, and another student would be, you know, really looking what you're talking about as differentiated instruction, even within your classroom. Uh, so it depends on the student and their needs as to what supports they would need.
Plus, some of the students are sick, but most of them are healthy that are being quarantined. So that brings up another, another.
Are we getting back to the motion?
That, yeah, this is, this is all in regard to the motion, um, because I think it all relates.
Okay.
The quarantine problem is, is originating with our local health department for our county. If, if the quar- I'm trying to word this so that it makes sense. Under the current quarantining rules, that wasn't as easy to say as I thought it would be, under the, under those rules, I, I have to, I have a tendency to lean towards Dr. Short's suggestion of maintaining that availability for the teachers to deal with students. I mean, going, to your, to your point, Kelly, if I've got six students out, and to suddenly jump to 45, yeah, that's, that's a nightmare. That, that really is taxing because now I've got that many more students, and it's not just one teacher. I mean, I, I guarantee one teacher isn't going from Cisco, I mean, it's spread over through the whole school. I get that. But with my luck, it would be all my students. That's just how it rolled. But the, every student is different, so you're having to think of all these additional students. It is hard when a student is not in the classroom, and then when you know they're gonna be gone for 14 days, that is its own nightmare. I'm, I'm thinking that, under the current quarantine rules, that we keep the Mondays for our teachers and for their sanity, but if the quarantine rules become, and yes, I'm going to step on this, my apologies to Mr. Robinson, more logical and not so restrictive, then I could see, well, now we can operate more normally because we don't have these restrictive quarantine rules hanging over our heads that other counties don't have. So I would like to, then I would see, yeah, jump, jump on it. And if, if those were to change, well, heck, we could call a separate board meeting to change things, right?
I, I, just if I, if you don't mind me interrupting, so.
No, go right ahead.
Mr. Robinson sent an email this morning saying that for secondary students, classroom exposure, if everyone's in a mask on a bus, has been reduced from the current six feet down to three feet.
Yay.
So, so he sent a letter out just this morning that announced that change moving forward.
So that's 5th through 12th? Or I forget, does HPI fall under the three feet? Remind me.
HPI didn't, so it would be 7th through 12th.
7th through 12th is now just three feet?
Mm-hmm.
So that's excellent. That helps a lot.
Yeah.
That helps a lot. Okay.
Are they keeping though with the, still the quarantine for the athletics where it doesn't matter? You know that part where it talks about extracurricular and athletics?
We, we need to get back to the motion.
I know, but this, this all pertains to the motion because it's, it's gonna change my viewpoint as to whether I'm, I'm wholeheartedly agreeing with.
Agreed.
The five day return or leaning towards.
Well, we should direct our questions to the board and the discussion to the board. I mean, you can ask principals questions, but I think we, the, the motion is out there. We have a second. We're discussing.
I, I really feel we're not prepared to vote at this time. I think Kelly and Sue make a valid point for maybe we want to have several different options to look at. Right now, we are just looking at one option. Option B with remote Mondays discontinuing in May. That's what we're voting on, but there's concern about that. And, and maybe, maybe we want to have remote Mondays in the junior high. Keep those. I, I just think that to vote today, we're gonna either have to amend the motion. I, I just don't think we're prepared to vote.
Okay, I, my question would be, we're talking just about the high school right now, not the HPR Junior High. We're gonna prolong it to, to 15th. What's, what's gonna change the discussions of 15th? Have the discussion now, cause the, my thought is, we're asking elementary teachers, starting yesterday, to go five days. We're asking them to work and, you know, educate, what have you. And we're hearing from the junior high and HPI and high school, um, Dr. Short has a plan of A or B here. He says that he would like to have additional remote days on Mondays in May. Um, what will change from now on to 15th? We can have discussion if it centers around this for the next 20 minutes to arrive to a decision. If you wait, what will we know?
Oh, that's a great point, because I was thinking that this morning when we came to this, what happened two weeks ago when I was saying five days a week? But with this, we've always said the high school was a different beast, and then looking at this plan, and again, I just said, okay, well, you come back three days for high, for seniors, and they don't, you know, just to, for the 17th of May. Then it started, clicked to me, like, is it really that worth it to do those three days and have the teachers, parents, students for just those three or potentially four Mondays? So if we're talking, you know, weeks ago, yes, but now I'm looking at this option and I'm thinking, is that worth it? But to get to your point, I do like to, um, maybe make a, a decision today because I think preparing and getting the information out there, but I'll do whatever we all decide.
So I probably am, I mean, here's where I'm with this is, is, and, and everything I've heard and I've, I've said time and time again, the, the remote Mondays are absolutely important for those quarantine students. I still hold on to that, but quarantine levels are still, you know, at these secondary schools, 60 out of over 3,100 students. So quarantine levels are still low. We've just heard some relief on the quarantine. The other thing that I've held fast on the remote Mondays, that is a, would be a big part of my vote here, and I, and I've heard it from, from Mr. Best and, and Mr. Christie, uh, and Dr. Short, you know, the planning for these teachers, that planning time is critical. That's what the Mondays have been used, but that there will be a shift in the daily operations of the schedule to provide that planning. I think that's incredibly important too, and that, that needs to happen, and I believe it will happen. You know, so that, I guess, takes me to my last, my last thought on this is that since August, we have had the mantra that five days of school is important, that we are biased, that, I'm, I'm sorry, that I am biased towards getting kids back in five days a week, and we've got an opportunity to do that here. And I, I'm, I'm in favor of moving in a positive direction with the relief that's coming in quarantine with the, um, with the lower numbers in the community right now. Uh, I, I'm feeling pretty good about, about taking this vote.
I, I, you can tell I'm getting saddle sore sitting on the fence here, um, and I totally agree with you, Eric, that the, the numbers are showing us that, and we've, but we, I think we've done a good job of watching the numbers, um, and looking at the data honestly, that we're, the numbers are not, even though we had a hiccup this past week, we could have the same hiccup go the other way next week. I mean, there, there's no rhyme or reason to this, and, and I think the COVID team has done an outstanding job in keeping track of that so that if we see the trend going back, like it did for the poor junior high, let's go back four days. Oh, let's not. Um, we can always, we know we can walk it back, even though there's only like a month and a half left of school. We know that if we need to walk it back for safety reasons or whatever for students, that we can do that. I'm not concerned as much after the April 2nd, cause our teachers will be fully vaccinated. They'll be, they should be okay. There should be no level of concern in their regard, but to keep student illness down, I get that. So in that, in that regard, Eric, I can, I can see, I see your point. Feel like we're playing poker here. I see your point. I'll raise you one. Um, we're trying, we're trying to read a crystal ball. We're trying, we're trying to read a crystal ball that we don't know what the future's going to be. So this does make sense. Dr. Short, I, I think this does make sense, I think it makes sense in Eric's point. Uh, and Gretchen, you made the point too, that this is a nice testing format to give us some normalcy towards, especially towards the end of the year when things, and, you know, when you're starting to get tired at the end of the year, you add that fifth day, that might, you know, re-energize everybody when most people are ready to throw in the towel at the end of the year. So that could be kinda, kinda interesting. I apologize, I'm going back and forth on this.
That's fine, that's fine.
I can argue.
That's why we discuss, that's why we discuss it, yeah.
I can argue it either way, and I think what we're, I think where the real gripe of the whole thing is that we don't know what's going to happen. But we can change it-
Right.
If, just like we've done before, if we have to. So in that regard, knowing that we can change it if we have to because of numbers, I can see of going along with Gretchen's motion, uh, for option B.
I, I think that-
And praying for the best.
I think you're absolutely right. The flexibility's always been what we talked about. Uh, to Eric's point, the goal has always been to get to five days. Um, even if that's in May, that's, we have achieved our goal. And, and I'm not saying we, we do it just to do it. If the numbers don't indicate that, we back off like we've done in the past for HPI and junior high.
That's probably not what the parents wanna hear, but we're trying to make plans on quicksand.
Well, the nice thing that Mr. Haasler just mentioned, is the commissioner, or the CDC said, three feet versus the six. That's gonna change the game a little bit.
That's gonna help, yeah.
That's gonna help.
Is it the CDC or Ben?
It's, it's, uh, Mr. Robison.
Wood County, yeah.
Mr. Robison is, is slacking that a little bit, but I, I would still like to see the quarantining. I think it's the quarantining that is the thorn in our side.
Isn't that what you said?
Yeah, so it'll go, if you're in a, in a classroom, um, and, or on a bus and everyone is masked, right now at the secondary level, if you are within six feet away, then you have to quarantine for 14 days. So that's the county rule, that's on a Perrysburg rule. What they're saying now is, if you're in a classroom in the high school and you're both masked and someone has COVID, then it's within three feet. So, so that changes that circle around that student.
Right.
So athletics, because they're not masked, or other areas like the cafeteria, because they're without a mask, it would reserve, revert back to six feet. And that's how it is in the elementaries as well.
Okay.
But again, you've heard plans about trying to mitigate that with how we're, you know, moving the cafeterias and trying to, to reduce that proximity.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Oh, I just have a question, 'cause this is to the board. What data are you seeing today that's different than what we saw two weeks ago that you guys would all vote for five days a week?
I'm, go ahead.
Yeah, the fact that the, the numbers are so drastically down compared to where, where they were in December. And they've stayed down. I think that's, I think that's the big key. It's not a hiccup, like this week was a hiccup. They have consistently gone down, the arch has gone down, um, for whatever reason.
We saw that two weeks ago at the presentation, so in two weeks, that's my question like-
To me, Mrs. Eubank, it's consistently, it's there, I mean, it's uptick maybe 10. But the other thing for me is the vaccinations that the staff's receiving. March 12th is the second one, April 2nd is when they're fully effective. So here we are, a couple of weeks later with, hey, things are looking pretty consistent for me.
I suppose I didn't realize my vote two weeks ago meant we'd never go back to five days a week, so.
I, I honestly, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think that. We said we would discuss it, I'm just wondering, what data did you see today that is making you vote today to go five days a week? I'm just making sure I'm not missing something.
Well, I think that, I think you're right. The teachers being vaccinated and the fact that the trend is, is really trending downward and downward rapidly. I think that, and, and now, and now Ben's, sorry, Mr. Robison's change there-
That's gonna help a lot.
That's gonna help a lot.
That's gonna help a lot.
To reduce the quarantining, I think that's gonna help a lot, so. Yeah, one more thing for the COVID team to have to change.
I, I think for me, the, the change, the reason I didn't want to go back, just bang. Okay, you're back tomorrow, that's it. I don't think that gave the staff time to prepare for the change. And one of the big things in the change, I think, is the ability for the teachers to plan and have time to plan. And as I listened, I thought that they had said they were building that planning time back in. But those changes, it seems like, well, you've always talked five days a week, for heaven's sakes, let's go back to five days a week. It doesn't take into account, we have to get the monitors, we have to revise where we're, we're eating. We have to revise how the gym is going to work. We have to revise so many things that you can't just flip a switch and say that for the number of students we have, the switch is harder to, to pull. And I think this, this time for planning, uh, as to how you're going to do it, was important.
Yeah.
And that's what's driving a bit of my desire, a, a big part of my desire to vote today is to provide that certainty, subject to change, to, to another change, a, a big uptick in COVID numbers. But to give the most time possible, say yes, this is the direction we're gonna go. So give the most time necessary for planning.
And I also think when Mr. Haasler talks about that balance as a board, we hear students, the parents, the staff, all three, and we want a balance. And I think, uh, I, I give credit to, to you as board members, the hearing what you're hearing from all sides and making the decision what's best interest of our students, our, our priceless treasures, our students. And the administration, as teachers and the staff, Mrs. Downs, you do a wonderful job of bringing that up each meeting. We can't thank them enough for the professionalism that they've shown. That they're not wearing T-shirts and combating and, and anti-this and anti-that. That they're, they're doing the best they can and going beyond what anybody would expect in a, in a school year. And we thank them for that. Sometimes a thank you is just not enough, but we've gotta make that decisions as a board on behalf of the population of our community, students and the staff. And, and I'm very, very proud to be with this board and associate with Mr. Haasler and the principals and staff, because we do make decisions based upon what we hear in our discussions. So I thank you for those discussions. Now, we do have a first and a second. Um, I believe, who, who, did I end up making the first, or Gretchen withdrew? Okay. Is there any other discussion about the high school going with option B? Which would have us returning, have them returning, um, five days, starting first Monday, April 26th, but actually May 3rd is the first full week with Monday, when they can open windows.
Is the motion for everything that was just presented at the high school?
Just the high school right now.
Just the high school?
Option, option B.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to call the vote.
Roll call please, yes, yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Motion passed. Again, thank you, Dr. Short, for your comments and the board. We wanna talk about the HPI and the junior high, or are we set for that date? Or, Mr. Haasler, do you need a, a board vote for that, or?
If, if the board would like to vote for that, that's fine. Otherwise, you know, we've always had the board vote on, on these transitions, so we could do it at the next board meeting, or if so inclined, this meeting.
You know, I like to get dates on the calendar for, for the folks to make changes.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we go with the presentation today for HPI and junior high returning to five days a week.
I will second.
Any, first and a second, is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. Again, Mr. Best, Mr. Christie, thank you for attending today. And, um, we, we certainly know the situation you're in, supporting the staff and students too, and, and making things work. And, um, thank you. Mr. Haasler was-
That's it.
That's it? Okay, that takes us to the item of consent agenda for items five through six. You have a chance to take a look at your, uh, agenda here. Again, just, uh, looking at some contracts, tutoring stipends supplemental, and of course hiring back some monitors that we need to allow the schools to function appropriately. Your motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Takes us to item seven, any further board discussion?
I have a question, and maybe Mr. Haasler could, um, answer this. Um, I've been hearing a lot about Dr. Seuss and schools changing and modifying their, um, the week of Dr. Seuss. And maybe we only do that in elementary if I am correct on remembering years ago when my daughter was in elementary. Um, as a district, has that been discussed? Are we, um, modifying or doing anything to that? I've been asked that, and I said I would ask it.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not certain that there's been any changes. Each building has the ability to, to plan, each teacher has the ability to plan for that, that Dr. Seuss, uh, I think it's his birthday?
Yes, today.
I think they do a week of Dr. Seuss or some, again, I can't really remember. Someone just asked me to ask, and I said I would.
Well, it was on the Perrysburg Community Facebook thing too, that it was, uh, somebody said that in their child's school, and they didn't specify which one, that it was canceled.
Oh, here in Perrysburg?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
And as a, a number one fan of Dr. Seuss, I was offended. I, I mean, I think he's, I think his stories are phenomenal. They teach reading through phonics. I'm sure Gretchen, you used him a lot in your classes. He teaches social issues from environmentalism with the Lorax to racism with stars on dars. I mean, he covers everything, love, family, getting along with each other, how to share. I mean, he covers everything. I can't imagine why anybody would find Dr. Seuss's stories offensive or wrong.
Let me, let me check on that, 'cause I'm not-
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, it did, it did come up on the community page.
I did not see that.
Um, I didn't know if you guys had seen, oh, my phone just went to sleep just a second. Um, the Senate confirmed Miguel Cardona as the new Education Secretary. That happened last night. Um, he is, he was born and raised in, um, Connecticut, but his family is Puerto Rican. Um, I, there is a Washington Post article on him, yeah. Um, and he sounds pretty interesting. I was not a personal fan of Betsy DeVos, I didn't understand why she was in there. Um, he at least is an educator, um, principal, teacher, uh, and was the Commissioner for Education in Connecticut. Not the level that Randy Gardner is, because he's never really dealt with college level. But, so we, we now have a new Education Director.
Thank, thanks for that. I'm a big fan of local control of school boards, so stay out of our way.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Uh, let's go to item number eight, which would be executive session. And for the purpose of preparing the executive session for conducting, reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees, we don't expect any further action to take place after that. Before we do go into executive session, I would like to ask for a five-minute recess, if we, if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, but let's have a motion for executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be going to executive session after a five-minute recess, thank you.